Good morning. It's August 6th, 9:00 AM. I will call the order of the meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Predichson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Weis.
And Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Please, if you're able to stand and join me in a flash salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of the approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll, approval of the Resolution 24-2407 for Don Torrell's Kitchen LLC to apply for a liquor license, approval of county commission meetings for July 23rd, and the approval of public forum agenda. Is there any item on the list that any commissioner would like to remove or discuss?
Move approval?
We got the motion.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So that passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay, that moves us into E.
Declaration of a State of Local Disaster Emergency with Michelle Weiss, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commission. I am here to declare the storm that came through on Wednesday evening as a state of local disaster just due to the sheer magnitude of damages to property and the concern of life safety due to the power outages for the extended period of time that we had from Wednesday evening through Saturday afternoon. At this time, the declaration would only be for seven days. Just a recap of so far what has taken place in the time since that incident occurred. Wednesday evening, we have provided 500 meals to those that were without power within the first 48 hours. We also do have four chainsaw teams out currently helping with limb cut down and movement to the right of way so the city of Salina can come through and pick those up within the next couple of weeks. The health department opened up as a cooling shelter for those without power. Celine County Roden Bridge has also stepped up and provided a team of a loader and grapple and some dump trucks to help with the city of Salina to make sure that operation in limb pickup and debris removal moved a little bit quicker. We also have the Expo Center that had offered to open up their location just right at fair time for us so we could do some meal distribution out at their facilities as well. We continue to have requests for debris assistance, so we will continue to work through that as the volunteers can continue to work through the list. As of right now, there's over 125 homes on the list, and they have made it through 35 of those homes just due to the sheer magnitude of debris at each house. So that is where we are at right now, and we will continue to do so throughout the next week. Are there any questions?
No, I just got one comment. Michelle, I want to really commend the emergency management. I want to commend the first responders, the people who stepped forward. You're talking about a community that pulled together during this time. There was a lot of damage out there, and a lot of people were displaced. You know, thank the Red Cross and the people there for, you know, the food that was done on the one day and the other food that was given out and the help from everybody. So thank you guys very, very much.
Yeah, it was absolutely amazing to see neighbors come through and help those that were unable to pick up their limbs and just step up, whether they had a chainsaw or just the physical ability to move limbs. It was very heartwarming to see.
Michelle, I noticed that Governor Kelly has applied for federal aid for 13 counties, I think it is, and are you aware of that? Has there been any notification from the governor's office that Celine County is one of those 13 counties, or do you know anything about any of that?
Typically, when she does a disaster declaration, she lumps in several weather events in one declaration. So right now, we've provided our numbers and our initial assessment to the state of Kansas, which we have met our threshold so far just through debris pickup and the damage done to the airport. So once they take those numbers, they'll consult with the northeast regions that were also hit by this storm, and they will then basically wait to see if Mother Nature has another round of storms that she would like to provide the state of Kansas. And if there's significant damage there, they'll lump that in under one declaration. So when they do take it to the president's office to ask for assistance, it's only being asked once by the state of Kansas, not multiple times for things.
So typically, you're saying that it will be a while before we hear anything at all?
Typically, it takes her two to three weeks to decide if they're going to pursue it farther.
Any more questions there? Any comment from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Chair, I move we adopt Resolution 24-2409 as presented.
Second. Have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 24-2409 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to note, Mr. Chair, we are having audio issues with Commissioner Weis, so we're working on that.
Okay.
Resolution for Solar Provisions with Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a resolution considering the adoption of solar regulations for our current zoning regs. The planning commission did hold a series of hearings beginning in February of this year to discuss and receive public input on provisions required for commercial energy, commercial solar energy systems in Celine County. On June 25th, after sufficient public input was received and a number of revisions, the planning commission recommended unanimous approval of the attached resolution for your consideration. Your alternatives for action would be to approve the attached resolution adopting the provisions for commercial solar energy systems to be under new subsection 12.16. Make no changes to Article 13A, Section 12, or send back to the planning commission. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution adopting 12.16 because it is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. And the public did provide a lot of input that we have tried to include in that as well. So there's no financial impact to the county on this. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Tim, I just got one question. On your, when you're talking about, it'd be on page 21, the commercial utility scale for solar energy, that one mile, is that just one mile either direction from a solar facility?
The way it works is one mile, there's a buffer that we put. We draw a line around from where they're proposing their facility. We draw a line around that to, basically, it's like a buffer, similar to what we do for notification.
Okay. So one mile still seems a little, a little close for, you know, if you, say if you lived out in that vicinity.
Yeah, and we send notification out to, within two miles, I think is what the actual notification area for those facilities are within two miles. So all the property owners within two miles would get notice. And of course, the planning commission could, if they, you know, depending on the scale of what was being proposed, the planning commission could also alter that a little bit as well, you know, so.
So they, I mean, if they decided it was going to be a huge deal, then they could go in and alter whatever.
They could all, yeah, they could say, they could, you know, basically say, hey, look, you know, this is, you know, if it's, if we're going to go, we don't feel comfortable with the one mile with this particular proposal. If they don't feel comfortable with it, then they can change it, you know, amend it to two miles.
Did I see something in there also about the, you've included the ag land in one and two, and then, like I said, then there's three and four for?
Yes.
Okay. How come we didn't go with the three and four also with the group?
The one and two is the most common, and it's the most prevalent, tends to be the most prevalent. The one and two is the one that's the most, I should say, the one that's of state importance as well as local importance. And so the three and four, you already have development for residential and things like that that are already in three and four that have affected those areas. So really, to, you know, restrict them just to the one and two would have been difficult. But again, it's one of those things where these provisions are just, they're like a standard. I said, the planning commission can, if they want to, you know, again, depending on what the proposal is, they can, they can modify that as needed.
I know this was a hot button for a lot of citizens out there. Did we get much feedback or anything on the stuff?
Quite a bit.
You set out?
Quite, quite a bit. We had a lot of public input on all of the meetings that we had, and the commission did listen to them. And many of the provisions here, especially with regard to the 640 acres, was something that, you know, one of the commissioners was emphatic on. Instead of making it 1,000 acres, they said, make it 640 because the industry standard, I think, the couple of the industry folks were like, well, if you make it 640, it's not going to be very profitable for us or economically feasible for us. But they said that the way that we have it worded, though, makes it so that the, I think that the commission has decided that it was, it is feasible, you know. It's not something, we want to preserve our ag land, and that's where a lot of the numbers come from, is preservation of the ag land. That's of most importance.
And I did, my last question, I didn't see anything in there at all. Is there anything in the provision about having a solar farm here, and then somebody decides they want to put another one in so far from it? Is there anything in that provision on that?
It's, the way that it's defined as 640 acres is, you take into account one mile separation between, so like if you have, like, let's say, there's a project in Celine County, and then there's, let's say, there's a project in an adjacent county that's kind of tied to it, then there's like a mile difference between the two that they would have to locate so as to be considered a separate entity, separate project.
One of my questions, Tim, is that under your setbacks, and it kind of gets me, is where, over here, you have a mile buffer around the 640 acres. You have that mile buffer, and you have to notify everybody here is for, located with a minimum of 5,280 feet from existing residents. But, and then you have this two miles. Does that two miles start from the outside of that five, that mile, or the inside?
No, it starts, the way that we work the notification process is, right now, we have a 1,500 foot from the boundary.
Yeah.
And so what we're doing is we're making that two miles. And the reason we're making that notification area for this particular use two miles is because we had issues with, like, the school, you know, the school being within proximity of the, you know, we wanted to make sure all the public facilities and things were noticed because it is a large area in certain parts of the, you know, parts of the county, there's a lot of.
And that's, I guess that's one of my, my issues, is that, you know, out of that two miles, one mile of it can't be put in anyway. You don't, it's kind of an ironic thing that you have the two mile after that that you have to let people know, but that inside mile, they can't.
Well, I mean.
Can't build it anyway.
Well, technically, if it's a, if the one mile, it's very specific to residences. So it's, it's going to be like a mile between, you can't have something within a mile of the residence, but even though it's within a mile of the residence, we've been running into situations like with the plus power thing last year, where people were outside of that area that would have, you know, or were concerned about being affected. And that's why we have the two miles, to include more individuals to, you know, just let them know what was going on.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment? Can you step forward and state your name?
Bill DeSilvy, 4945 South Simpson Road, Gipton. Well, as I said earlier, one of these begets the other. And apparently, there was an issue last year with a one mile buffer around the proposed battery energy storage system. So we want assurances that this same, these same types of buffers they are talking about for this solar installation are going to be applicable if the battery system comes our way.
Okay. Any more public comment? Okay, I'll bring, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make one thing clear from my point of view. Teresa Swisher, 4853 East McReynolds Road, sorry. The ordinance says that it has to be one mile from, so you have the outside of the solar energy farm, and any house within one mile, it cannot be built within one mile of any home. And that is very important for us that live in that area.
Thank you. Okay, no more public comment?
I think he was going to answer that question.
No, I was just going to just agree with that. She explained it better than I could have. I said, it's just, yeah, that's basically what it, that mile is.
The one mile.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 24-2408 as presented. Second.
Have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 24-2408 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay, that moves us into informational items.
Planning and zoning mid-year status report with Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
The, this is for the period January 1st through July 31st. Planning Board has prioritized addressing alternative energy provisions for the zoning regulations. As stated earlier, between February and June of this year, the board received public input and discussion at length provisions for commercial solar systems. At the June meeting, the board recommended approval of the resolution that you all just passed, adding in 12.16. The, I've also given you some building permit information there. You can see that we're up a little bit more this year, year-to-date than we were last year, with 33 versus 26, respectively. Our plans are, the board has begun its discussion and public input regarding a potential amendment to establish provisions for battery energy storage systems. It is anticipated a resolution will be drafted, you know, before the, just before the end of the year. We're going to take our time with this and, again, get some additional public input to help kind of craft that resolution before it comes before you. Our budget is, you had 2024 revenue of 72,610. 2024 expenditures so far is 128,562. 50% of the budget is used. 2023 revenue was at 83,520, and the expenditures last year were 127,700. With that, I'll, you know, that's all I've got for now.
Any questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
County Appraisers update with Sean Robertson, County Appraiser.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Okay.
Good morning. So, over the last several months, we have been working as diligently as we always do in our office to fairly value all of the properties in Celine County. One thing that we have accomplished, which sounds simple, and it is, but has been an invaluable tool to us, is we created a calendar that details the statutory and the state property valuation division and office deadlines that has been given to everyone in our office and posted in a couple spots in our office that really allows each of our people to take ownership of their work rather than asking me or their supervisor, okay, when is this due? What are we doing next? And as simple as it is, that's become a really good thing for our office. Also, we will likely get the highest annual report from Department of Revenue Property Valuation Division in at least 10 years, as far back as I can see. We are graded on everything that we do by the state. Like when I was teaching in a former life, there's really three elements to that that are, did you turn in your work on time? Were you accurate? And did you show your work? So as accurate as we might be with our values, we do have to show our work and document how we arrive at every single value. We actually held the fewest number of informal hearings in 2024 in the past 10 years. That's not always the best measure of if you're doing a good job, because if you're severely undervaluing properties, you probably don't have the number of hearings. However, combine that with the accuracy of our values, I think that that shows that we are trusted. And along with that, I just think people are more aware and informed of what real estate in particular is doing at this point in time. We have had a 96% success rate defending county values at the Board of Tax Appeals. If people aren't happy with our values and they talk to us and we still don't change it, they can appeal that onto the Board of Tax Appeals. I think this shows that we do have that documentation to back up our values, and they are accurate. We have reorganized our staff and are in the process of doing so literally as we speak to fulfill the need brought on by new construction. I'm sure everyone has noticed that particularly residential new construction in Salina and Celine County is going at a pace that we probably haven't seen since the 1950s. And we had a difficult time last year being able to get out there and measure and inspect those properties and being able to pick those up. We were able to do it, but it was a rush. So I'll get into how we're able to do that without increasing staff here shortly. So some things that I have done, not necessarily our office as a whole, testified on legislation in the House of Representatives and the Senate. I do this quite a bit for our organization and inform legislators of what we do and how we do it. So one of the big things that I personally worked with, the executive director of the manufactured homeowners housing association for the state of Kansas, was getting past, doing away with the annual filing of personal property for anyone that has ever had or does have a boat or a trailer or anything that you have to annually file that rendition. That will no longer be the case beginning next year. It will stay on the tax rolls until you inform us that it comes off. This is good for the property owners. It's good for is good for the property owners. It's good for us as appraisers. It reduces our workload. That's how we're able to transfer someone that has been assigned to do that job into being able to pick up this new construction. That's how we're able to do that. And it's good for the, the county as a whole. So I, I am on the Kansas Association of Counties Executive Board. And although KAC worked, I think you're all aware, to reinstate the Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction Fund last year, that didn't end up going anywhere. However, in the legislature, a little bit in lieu of that, kind of the direct-to-consumer portion, any residential property, not any residential, but most residential properties will have a hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents written off, if you will, their property tax bill. So kind of skip the middleman and the county, but it is good for all of the residential homeowners in the state. And that is off of the state portion, so it does not affect the county or any local budgets. I've given presentations about valuation and budgets and taxation to various groups, whether it's KAC, League of Kansas Municipalities, testified at length to a special legislative committee on taxation, which is not the most fun thing to do in the world. Also was asked and did give a presentation to the Granny Brigade about these topics as well. I also helped establish the county and city-county building safety committee. It started out as just this building. I think everyone, all of you are aware that this is not the ideal building for the age in which we live in, and we're trying to address some of those things. But then that got expanded into other county facilities because we obviously have more than just this building. And there are some, some serious and some minor issues that we look to address. So our plans for the next six months will fully implement the new job duties and positions I discussed earlier. We hopefully get to evaluate all the newly constructed structures on properties in a timely manner. We now have the adequate staff to do that. So we'll maintain the public trust by valuing properties accurately and fairly. We have been very good at that the past few years, even though the process may not be simple. We try to explain it in such a way that people understand. Maintain the highest level that we can with the state. You know, we get inquiries from other counties and other appraisers nearly every day because our office is one of the more trusted ones in the state to provide information. One thing I want to add, those revenue-neutral rate notices are going out soon. Although not directly related to our office, we will get those phone calls and just wanted everyone to be aware. We can't make value changes at this point in time, but we can certainly explain things and answer any questions that people might have. So the budget portion of what we do, we had a budget increase of just, of less than one percent for twenty-four over twenty-twenty-three, and yet we're still able to have our spending be down slightly compared to last year at this point. Beginning next year, our printing and mailing costs will likely be lower than in the past. I discussed the personal property, doing away with the, the annual filing, so we don't have to send out those renditions anymore. So printing and mailing costs will be down. But our education cost will likely increase due to employees in new positions, but we can mitigate that by having them take online classes when possible. Did want to note that the appraiser is a little bit different than, than other offices. There is actually in statute, education that's required of us by law. So. Then finally, what a lot of people ask about from our office is valuation topics. Residential values are increasing, but not as significantly as in prior years. If you look there year over year, although there's still an increase in twenty-four versus last year, it's certainly not to the level that it has been. That doesn't have anything to do with overall valuation. That's just sales prices of properties. And I think in Salina and Saline County, that this increase may be easing somewhat due to the supply of houses rising, going up. So there's more available. Commercial properties are basically level. There's been an increase in building costs and a large increase in commercial property lending rates, which has really slowed it. Almost all the growth in commercial properties are in special projects or areas that have to do with IRBs, economic development, tax increment financing areas. But otherwise, it's pretty level. Did want to note that exemptions have an effect on the tax base, and the state statutes allow those exemptions. Board of Tax Appeals approves exemptions. There's a misconception that the appraiser can exempt or tax property at will, and that's certainly not the case. We just facilitate getting everything to the right people in Topeka. But this can mean that many millions comes off the tax roll at any given time. Give an example, a utility company was granted an exemption by the state of which we were not aware until last week. And the reason for that is we do not value utility properties locally. That is done at the state level. And so the exemption process skipped us locally, went to the state, and we were not aware that that value had been removed from our, our local valuation until now. But, you know, I appreciate that we have an administrator and a commission that understands that exemptions are state statute, and we just have to deal with the challenges as they come up rather than demanding that the appraiser fight against a lawful exemption, because believe me, that happens elsewhere. Anyway, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Sean?
No.
Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us into, okay, I guess the next one.
Commissioners' comments.
See none?
Announcements.
Just to remind folks that today, there's an event going on until seven PM. It is primary election day. This is the day when you go to your polling place. Don't come to the city-county building because that was over yesterday at noon. If you do need to find your polling place, you can do that online or of course, call the clerk's office. But county clerk is very busy today.
Concept discussion, discussion of RFP for elected official pay with Philip Smith, County Administrator.
So good morning, commissioners. We've been talking about this particular topic a few different times, and the last study session at which we discussed it, the conclusion was that the commission needed more information and wanted to retain or at least explore the possibility of retaining an outside firm to evaluate that type of information. So I told you all I would draft an RFP and bring it back to you before we send it out. So attached that to the agenda today and looking for any sort of feedback on it, any edits. Did I get the correct comparison counties that you want to use? Are there other elements that you feel like are missing? Or do you want to switch direction in some fashion at this point? So just open to, to Commissioner feedback.
I've just got one question. Phil, I've just, was, or I guess for the commission itself. I mean, we looked at a certain number of, of places to look for guidance on what they're paying their, you know, their elected officials. Is it really worth, for what we're looking at, is it really worth the $10,000 that we want to spend on this? Is it, are we able to take a look at those places that we've, you know, looked at and say, you know, can they give us the information without having to spend $10,000 going out and getting this? Now, maybe I'm not looking at it the way it should be, but I thought I would bring that up.
So since that was phrased in the form of question, I'll respond. Yes, I mean, it's certainly possible for staff to, again, if, what, what was brought to you last time was just whoever responded to questions, if we've correctly identified the comparison counties this time, it's certainly possible for staff to go and, and get that information rather than hiring an outside firm.
The $10,000 doesn't bother me. I think it makes it a professional study, and I, I think it's worth our time. The other thing is, your, your staff is very busy, and I'd like to unload this. My main concern is I've thought more and more about this is, I'm still amazed that two people can run for election for different pay, you know, which just, I use the term, it's such a broken system. I mean, is that going to be addressed in the questions that we ask other people? Because that can be, that could be a campaign election. If somebody's making, running for this much and somebody else is running for this much, that person can just sit, say, you know, vote for me, I'm going to take less tax dollars. I mean, that's just wrong. So I mean, is that going to be addressed in this study?
So as the RFP is currently written, I would say not directly. I think it would be addressed by implication when you get the information back. But I can certainly, I can certainly add that in as a question for a potential consultant to address. That's easy to add in.
Because if it, because if it happens everywhere, so be it. I just, I'd be surprised.
Well, I think that the, the real issue here is exactly what you just said. Two people could be running for the same office and they would be paid drastically a different level of pay. That is the real issue. I think you've properly identified the, the counties that we should be compared to. I don't think this is a statewide thing. We certainly shouldn't be compared to Audubon County or one of the counties out west, it's a significantly different type of population. I'm up in the air on the 10,000 one way or the other. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like this would be that big a deal for the staff. 10,000 isn't that big a deal either. So I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence on that one. But the counties that are involved and the discrepancy in the pay, the potential discrepancy in the pay are the things that need to be identified. And I would like to see that number become a consistent number, period. You know, base, base salary is 90,000, 100,000, 10,000, whatever that number is, it should be the same regardless of who's running, incumbent, new person, whatever.
I would just like to add to that is that one of my thought processes was, what if we just take our current pay scale that we've got? When somebody's elected, that here's what you're running for, and let's say we take the middle of the road, and it puts them above any pay of what, who's underneath them, basically. And if it starts at that point, then if they get reelected for the second term, it goes up to five points. And if it goes up another, if they get reelected the third term, it, it just goes up that deal. So it's pretty much cut and dried every time where they start. And then if they get reelected, here's where you're at. If you get reelected, here's where you're at. And that's already in our documentation. Basically, you wouldn't even have to go out for a study. But that's just a thought.
So, Mr. Administrator, are you completely mixed up now? I've heard about four different ideas here, so.
So, since nobody's seizing on Commissioner Sparks's last comment there, I think the direction remains to go forward with an RFP, but add in some more specific language about how other counties address not having people run for different rates.
I, I guess I'm, yeah, I, I agree that that's what we want to do.
I'm in agreement.
It's good for me.
And, and let's go back just a second if I could. Specifically then, how are we going to go at the number? Is that a totally a separate issue? The number being the pays, the pay number? Or is that going to be part of the RFP? In other words, county clerk, we, or we go out and we find out that other counties are doing, have, have a method that they do this with. How, where are we going to set these numbers as far as the, the pay? Is that going to be part of this process? Or is that going to be a separate process?
Well, certainly we're, one of the things we're asking for is what those numbers are in other counties. That does not indicate that that's what you all need to pay. I mean, I, just, we will know, okay, this is what Douglas County pays, this is what Cali County pays. It's your, of course, discretion ultimately, whether you like those numbers or you don't.
And I agree with that. I, I, I don't want this, I don't want you to have to come back and say, okay, here's our RFP, the number is 95,000, we're going to pay everybody, all the, all the elected officials. You know, I, I want to talk about that as a separate issue.
Yeah, I think that's a very, very good question that you asked him, Commissioner. My understanding is this is just be informational. And
That's what I'm getting at.
I just want more information, and then, and then we can go from there. And if, if it stays the same, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm not necessarily for that right now, but that could be an option too, is just it stays the same. We're just, we're just, we're gathering information for us to make a decision.
And it, with that having been said, thank you, because I'm getting the cart before the horse probably.
Yeah. I'm hoping it doesn't come back and say a definite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I'm not looking for a, a number.
Right.
Not looking for you to assign a, a salary value to that position at this point.
Just information.
Just, yeah. Can we do this? Should we do this, et cetera?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us into H.
Mr. Chairman, staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the attorney-client privilege to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for ten minutes to discuss a matter of potential litigation and reconvene in this room at nine fifty-four.
So move for that, move on.
Second.
Executive session.
Move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, we have our executive session. We have our executive session.